So, we think that since this meeting is all from the students and why we should do this request that we will have lots of new members, so let's start from one end and please give us
time to invite you.
Okay, cut it.
You need to wear this.
Okay, leave it, leave it, I'll just hold it. Yeah, go on Kenneth.
So yeah, parents, we wanted to end school like early, so like 2:30 because I think us students, we have, we are like not having time for ourselves, you know, we are like studying too much, we have too much notes to write and all and we are like studying too much. So like yeah, we need time for ourselves, so like I go practice and all that, so like we need rest, so for our studies and all that.
Good.
I will say the same, we have to rest after going essay, after coming from school, we get no time for ourselves, we eat, utne me eat like, utne me 5:00 baje jate, then we have to study, then till 8:00 we study, we sleep late because of studies.
I agree with what Kenneth and Sharda said, but like obviously we need to study and all then, like if we, if we, if we write notes, we are not able to study, if we ask, if we study, we are not able to write notes, like time management is an issue over here, but then I agree with some issues like with two and Aradhya also, that they have siblings over here, so their parents won't be able to adjust and stuff.
That is, that is logistic problem, not to do with, with your studies or getting home on time, that is a separate issue.
Yeah. I agree with what everyone else said, I think, I agree with what everyone else said and yeah, we do get, we have to study a lot when we get home and most of the time we don't get time for ourselves when we are back, yeah. And it's not only the studies, it's also like after twice a week, we have PE and in PE, it's barely the 10 of us and some people want to play Karim, some people want to play badminton, so we can't really, you know, we can't really like, you know, all of us play PE and also from 3:10 to 3:30, we're not doing anything, we're just idle, so those were the few points.
I agree what Kenneth said as he has practiced and all, I live really far away, like 20 kilometers away, I reach home by like 4:15, 4:30 and then I'm completely exhausted, I just sleep, I cannot even do my work, if I start, if I do my notes, I cannot study and for me personally, if I'm tired, I cannot study at all, I cannot study for any tests.
So I agree whatever everyone said, but the thing is that I have one sibling in 15th standard, my dad cannot come, cannot come to pick me first and pick him afterwards because he also has his work and past month, like we had some family problems, so his work is also disturbed, so I don't have any problem.
Okay, yeah, just keep that, okay, so I'll give you my point of view as, I've got couple of questions, one is about PE, that, that is not, maybe Ms. Kiranjit will answer that one because she will talk to you about your timetable, apart from all of you sitting here, there is the other two kids as well, who is Aradhya and Taher, three kids, three students who, who actually were not for it, you know, what they said because of whatever reasons, whatever their reasons that they can, you know, because of their, their parents can't come to pick them up because they have got siblings in the younger class, classes and all that, I think that was the main reason, no, that they could not, yeah?
But that, that wasn't because, that wasn't a reason for them not to, not to agree with, with them, I think they all agreed, they just said that they didn't really have a problem because they would have to stay behind anyway because of their siblings, yeah?
Good morning, parents, see, when the children spoke to us about going early, it is not something which cannot happen, but it should be justified, so we heard all the students, their problems, it should be justified, like for example, what she said for PE, I have, we have given them PE with 10 standards, so there's a big group, it doesn't matter whether you are playing and if you say that some are playing Karim, I think all the classes they do, that some are playing basketball, some go to football and the ones who don't want to play, they play Karim, yeah, so that reason I didn't understand, you don't want to play, that is your prerogative, okay, we can't take it into consideration, maybe Kenneth wants to play, maybe Shimron wants to play, so and we have to give PE because PE is, I remember till 10 standard, they used to fight for PE, cry for PE and suddenly you say you don't want PE, so this is something which we will not consider, but apart from that, like how you said, K, you want to go home because, like how Shimron said, I reach at 4:15 and I need sleep, I wake up at 6, I reach 5 o'clock home, I don't sleep, I sleep at 10 o'clock, Shimron, I'm older than you, I'm 50 years and for your age, your energy levels would, should be much more than what I have, right? And I am still ready to go, what chapter I'm going to teach next day, I still before going to bed, I go through what topics I'm going to teach tomorrow, that is not an excuse.
What time did you get to sleep last night?
What time?
What time did you fall asleep last night? 12, 6, what, slept all the way through?
What?
He fell asleep at 6, he didn't eat, he, he slept all the way through?
Why?
Because he was up the night before, that's why.
That's, you need to change your lifestyle, boy, because that cannot be discussed.
You know, you know.
That is your discipline problem, you cannot live a life and say, K, I cannot study at home because that is a problem, you need to maintain a set routine and it is not only about you, for everyone, your parents do, we do, this is how life works, you cannot say, I did not sleep at night, so today's school should be off because I am sleepy, let others also go home and there should not be any teaching, that doesn't happen and other schools, I'll tell you, when you go to college, the college timings in most places are till 4 o'clock, this is only school, you are lucky, you are getting free at 3:15, the colleges are from 8:30 to 4, 4:35 depending on the practical timing, sometimes assigned students, even sometimes in the colleges, because I have seen the postgraduate, graduate colleges, even abroad, my daughter, last class till 6 o'clock evening, it might happen that in between, there is one period free or two periods free, but they don't go home, you have to be in the premises because you attend the last class and then only you can go, so that reason is again not valid, let's talk the practical problem, if actually you want to leave early, we will agree if it is justified properly, so now we have listened to the students, we will like what parents' point of view. Yeah, please.
Yeah, good evening, good morning, yeah, so I understand about our kids and our teachers, like mission, so I am agree because I like to support my, our generation, so I just small issue, I tell them, because mindset is everything, because if you want to achieve your something, goal tomorrow, you have to set your mind and you keep a discipline and hard work, so there is a, no comfortable zone in this year, this is your challenge, so challenge is you go forward, so tomorrow, of course, you'll achieve your goal, so study hard, whatever you would like to do comfortable, go harder, okay, so then, then look after your comfortable zone, this is another time, okay, this is the time to achieve your goals and make your parents too proud, that's all, okay, and all the best, and I'm always supporting Greenpeace is the best, so whatever time travel and you sit here, so I'll agree with you, so I'll always supporting with you and thank you very much to next one, okay?
Ma'am, mujhe koi problem nahi hai 3:30 se, kyunki ye ghar pe jaake aarami karte hain, to haan, aur mobile boh chalta hai ghar pe, to jitna time school me, main to kheti hoon ke 5:00 baje tak hona chahiye.
Sure. Your mom is telling lies, she is telling lies.
Sohne ka jaagne ka koi bhi timing nahi hai. To mujhe koi problem nahi hai, main to yehi chaunga ke 3:30 hi reh, thank you.
Because Sharda, because Sharda humare saath kitri de se hai aur hume sab iske baare me maaloom hai, so yeah, I agree with you that, you know, inko khud responsibility hai nahi leta hai.
Nahi leta.
Jo bachche ghar jaake vo karte hai na ke, jaise.
Isko ma'am tension jab hota hai, jab exam chalu hota hai na, suddenly usse pehle padna shuru karte hai, tab din daat ek karte hai, usse pehle isko kuchh bhi tension nahi hoti hai, hume rehti hai tension, to hume koi problem nahi hai.
Aapki aapko tension leni ki zrot nahi hai, is umr me, inko khud apni tension, apni padhai ki tension khud leni chahiye, right? Abhi ye chhoti chhoti bachche nahi hai ke hum inko spoon feed kare, right? So abhi inko apni responsibility samjhini chahiye.
Aur padne ke liye to ma'am jitna time mile na, utna acha hai, to school timing se koi fark nahi padta hai, pehle bhi 3:30 tha, ab bhi 3:30 hi rehna chahiye, mere hisaab se to.
Good.
She can say.
We'll see, thank you. We can't say, yeah. So I just want to say that she's actually right, I agree to that, same I think goes with every single child here, after going from here, like children are on their phones, whether they agree or disagree, like, but that's why, like I think that even if you have to extend the school for them till 5 or 6, you want, you can keep them because they are without phones, yeah, actually, you see, see, before coming here, before this discussion was taking place, I was into the favor that, okay, they should, you know, they should reach home early so that they may get some rest and do their self-study, but where is that self-study actually? Right. It is not there at all, we have to force them for everything, so being in school, at least we are assured that they are without their phones and they are doing something, you know, that is what I feel, so I'm, I'm actually in the favor that, yeah, you can have it till 3:30, see, it's like me dropping her and picking her up, so I know that till 12, I have to, you know, I have to be with her and for her, so anyways, I don't have any problem.
We should keep them till 6.
Yes.
Hello, good morning, I also agree ma'am, keep them till 3:30, it's okay from my side, the only thing is, Kishna saying, they have a little free time after 3 o'clock till 3:15 or something, they are just idle and then it gets a lot rush, I think so when they are leaving, so maybe a little early, like 3 o'clock or something, so that the rush also, we avoid the rush because it is really heavy, the traffic or whatever, the from here leaving, I live close by, so for me, it's okay, 3:30 also, so whatever the school and everyone agrees, I'm with it ma'am.
You know, madam, if we, we start thinking about individual classes, because if we, if we let go, we have staggered time, the kindergarten leaves at 3, then first to fifth leave at quarter past 3, then the older kids leave up to 10, is until 10, by 3:30, so it is, you know, we have staggered the time as much as we can, so I don't think that that is, see, if we say, okay, now 11th standard can leave at 3 o'clock because of the rush, then what about the rush of, you know, for the other kids as well, in a school, we cannot work in for individual classes for our individual children, yeah, that, that would be a problem.
We'll be happy if you keep them till 3:30.
Thank you, thank you.
Good morning, teachers, I agree with Sharda's mom, that what she is doing, even Shimron is doing the same thing and I always tell him, Shimron, you have to take time, even if you are not getting time, you have to make time for your studies and do your best, give your best, because even we give you the best, because we are doing all the hard work to bring you here, then, because we are also like now with him, running up and down, so I also tell him, you also do the same thing, because I cannot, I do not want him to do what he wants to, because even when he goes to work and all then, that time, he cannot say, so I cannot come here at 7 or 8, so you have to make time for me, as, as I am like, as it is possible for me, because nothing is possible to you, cannot have something possible to you, you have to make time and work hard, so that's it, and I cannot, this we forget, Vito and Aradhya also for their problems and thank you sir, because you have already given Shimron 3:10 to go home, that's a great thing, I should say, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, so I'm okay with 3:30, so we reach home at 4 o'clock, then as usual, mobile, everything goes on, but now in 11th standard, he has become little bit serious, so he will do his studies whenever time is there, so I don't have any issues, I'm with the school.
We actually, thank you for your support, parents, we actually, you know what, listen to me carefully, if you think that this is tough, if you think this is tough in 11th standard, that we have got to study so much, you got to, you wait until you start going to work, because life is going to get much more tougher, this is easy life for you, you should understand that, this is easier life for you, you know, if you do not set, make, do, have discipline in your lives, if you do not start taking responsibility for your behavior and all that, then, you know, you are not going to be able to do anything when once you start working, we ask us adults, yeah, this is how it is, life is very tough once you get, start going out into the outside world, you do not, if you want a good job, you want a career, you want to provide for your family, you want to take on those responsibilities, you need to have a good career, yes, Shimron, and to have that, you cannot say, I will watch TV or whatever because I'm an adult and I will sleep during the day, you cannot do that, you will have to get up at, like Ms. Kiranjit said, we, all of us sitting here, we get up that time in the morning, you have to, and it's whole of your life, I'm 75 years old and I'm still doing that, yeah, so I want to scare you a little bit, life is tough, enjoy this, because at the moment, this is easy life for you, okay, right?
Okay, okay. I, I totally agree with the parents and the management, whatever they decided over here, but then for the sake of my classmates, I'd just like to put one suggestion, they all have been wanting, wanting to go home at 2:30 so bad, you can see their faces, they all are upset and I, I totally agree with the parents, but I'm, one suggestion I'm putting is, just like a trial period, just see if there's any progress.
Yeah. Let all the teachers have a say, please, what are your views now, please, no further here.
Yeah, good morning, all of you, when this was discussed and as soon as I went to the class, I think so my first thing to the students was, you need to learn time management, if you have come to the class, I do agree, class 11th is a jump, I do understand, but that doesn't mean that you go into the zone that you know you're very comfortable, no, you have to learn time management, you have to manage yourself, have everything to do in life, but you need to manage yourself, you can't cut off things, that no, I'm not doing this, I don't want to pee, I don't want lunch to be so long, it can't be in that manner, you have to organize yourself, okay, that's all I would like to say.
I would say, you know, we as teachers, as educators, we do understand, you know, this phase, you know, this is a very delicate phase, you know, you're in the prime of your youth, if I may put it like that, you're on the threshold of actually starting out into your, you know, the road to your career, but yeah, but this phase also at the same time is not just about academics, very importantly, this is the time where you are also building up skills to face the big world outside, you know, you're no longer really going to be always cushioned well in your homes, in your school, you know, there is going to be a time where you will have to run the race alone and for that, I think these little challenges, it's very important for you all to experience them so that you are prepared to face life, you know, look at it from the bigger picture, so just taking from the point of view as academics, okay, I don't want school to be, it's not just about school being this long or that long, you are also facing, you're learning to cope with hurdles, you're learning to cope with something, with things that don't always go your way, because that is preparing you for the larger race, okay, so I think it's very important for you all to be able to deal with these small little, your, your setups and because it's preparing you for life.
Okay, I completely agree with the teachers and also with the parents, see, maybe you all are finding it difficult because the subjects are new, everything is new to you all, okay, but if you all develop liking towards each and every subject, automatically things will be easier for all of you, so very, very important, develop liking towards your all the subjects, you know, automatically you will enjoy doing it, then this timing or time, you know, that stress will never come into the picture, so I feel focus and very important, develop liking towards the subjects, okay?
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Good morning, parents and students, as a discussion, what I think that you want, like an easy life, I'm telling you, it's not easy, actually, if you say this 11, 12 standard, say you have already passed the 10th standard, yes, you gone through that pressure, this is not a pressure actually, it's the same routine, only thing you have to manage your time, just do the planning and I think nobody does that planning, do you agree? Yes, planning is very important, so you said, K, you want to do this self-study, first tell me how many students made the timetable for yourself studying, yes, and what about others? Yes, planning, so actually, if you see, it's not difficult to do, just plan out, everything will be in their places, okay, thank you, I'll just give one example, I just went to my past, when I was in high secondary and our classes is to start at 12:45 till 6 o'clock and to reach Mavsa from Xavier to Mavsa because we have to come by walking, so 6:30 first time, Kalambu to reach my place, 7:30, so when you say that I get tired, there was no word tired, you know, dictionary, then we have to study, do our work, this and that and again, in the morning, 11 o'clock, go back with the college, no shortcut, you have to, you have to take the pressure and I'll, I'll tell you, by the end, you will be somewhere top of the world. So you know, this one, you're thinking is, yeah, you go, you didn't get up that early in the morning, no, but tell us, what time you took get up and what time you took home to get here?
What time did you get up after college?
Oh my god, because ma'am, I, it is like, what to say, because after college, I mean, when I reached in the college, the time was different, like 7 o'clock, I have to leave, okay, because again, I have to go by walking, no buses, I'm Xavier, so who will go by bus, so leave, then come back, reach home by 4 o'clock, lunch to bhul jao, forget of the lunch, then beer, forget of a lunch, dinner, everything, so I think this is the time, actually, I'm having my lunch and dinner time, otherwise beer, I just forgot about my dinner time. Actually, you have to take pressure, you have to, then there's nothing shortcut, no shortcut. Thank you.
Thank you, that is very true, there are no shortcuts in life, you got to have that mindset, you got to come out of your comfort zone, you can't be sleeping all day or all night, you're 11th standard, you're young adults now, you're no longer in first standard, second standard, you got to take responsibility for yourselves, you got to take accountability for your own actions, you can't have your parents next to you, standing over you, have you done your homework, have you done this, have you done that, and you all want one hour, is one hour got to make that much difference? One hour extra, you're going home, what, you're gonna just treat it like an hour extra to be on your phone, you two, you're gonna have an hour extra sleep, huh, is that what you're gonna do with it, with your time, with that extra hour? I'm asking you, what are you gonna do, Erica, with that extra hour? Huh, mobile, Sharda, what are you gonna do with that extra hour? Mobile, Shimron, what are you gonna do with that extra hour?
We know what he's talking about.
Chatting on the phone to Thailand?
Or sleeping.
Or sleeping.
She wants to say.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's like, I know one hour might not make a big difference, but like, I could like at least get to go out for some sport or something like that, a lot of us want to do that.
Please, 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 if you was going out for sport, you would have done it when you was younger, right? So don't now turn around and start saying, oh, I'll do this and I'll do that, I'll tell you what, if we all give you an hour.
Which sports?
Which sport? Which sports have you done?
When?
Now, up to now, what sports have you done outside of school?
Where? Outside of school?
Outside of school, in your spare time, since you've been in this school, what sports have you done?
Well, I can't talk about last year, last year I was basically.
Okay, the year before.
Skating.
Skating?
Yeah, I used to go for skating.
How long did you do skating, did you achieve anything, did you want?
Did you do it at national level, I mean, what, what?
No.
Ah, so you just, bit of fun.
Okay, so here's the last thing I'm gonna say on this, if we give you that hour, right,
I want to make sure that it counts. Do you understand?
Okay.
Yeah, okay, let us have our say in this, so I want to make sure that it counts, that you make it count, that one extra hour, if we give you that hour and any of you fail your PT ones, I'm telling you now in front of the parents, there's gonna be some big trouble for you lot. Do you understand, Shimron, you're guaranteeing me right now, you're not gonna fail, any of your exams. Kenneth? I don't, not really, I ain't got to worry about you either, or you, or you, okay, but you three particularly, hey, you three in particular, you're the most vocal about, or you were the most vocal about getting an hour. So we'll give you that hour, if they decide to give you the hour, but you better not fail your PTs, okay, all right.
So you have, that will ask them what happened. So, see, if I talk about the timetable, I don't know how many of you have seen the timetable, if the parents have seen the timetable, there are six subjects as of now, one, five main subjects, one is vocational tourism, which we have one period every day, what we have seen is, we have given them, apart from those six subjects, they have eight classes, eight periods every day, so accounts is three days more, extra, second period, they have got eight accounts periods in one week, they have more business studies periods, again, their English is more than five, six periods, then they have got economic six or seven periods, so that way, we have compensated that sixth and seventh period every day so that they get to learn more, so that we are able to finish the portion in time or revise or their doubts, that was the whole objective, see, accounts is something which they need practice, as of now, they are doing the theory part, Mr. Panna told me yesterday, it's just the theory going on, they have not started as yet with the proper, how they learn the accounts, they make a, that needs lot of practice and not at home, I guarantee nobody will study at home, when you are in school, we make them do more and more and more sums, they are like, like match because numbers are involved, so that was the only reason we gave accountancy more periods and I have seen children going for tritions of accountancy, when we started, see, I spoke to all the parents one to one, how school is going to help you, this is an advantage of coming to school because you are there till 3:30, in college when you go, you are on your own, they finish by 1, 1:32, whatever, why, because there is no accountability, you have to take care. You have to take your responsibility. The difference is, in school, we take responsibility. We still spoon-feed them. We make sure that they complete their notes. After every chapter, there is a test. This we are not doing for ourselves, not for the parents, it's only for you. And if you don't agree, I don't know if you are, you are not serious, you are not responsible, it looks like. Because you don't, you don't care, why is this happening? We discussed with amongst us and with the students. What we can do is, we can cut away those extra periods if, if we get parents' agreement on that. If we cut my, if we minus one period, then by end of seventh period, two thirty, they can go home. But my question still stays, if there are students who cannot go home at two thirty and if let's say, six students have gone, four are still in school, we won't be able to teach a new topic. So that time is, now it is wasted for those four children. Do you agree that? Now it is wasted, why? Because we are not teaching, they are on their own. If they want to study, self-study, fine, that is one thing. But uh see, this is why we called this meeting, we want to come to a conclusion. It should work for everyone. There are ten students in the class and I want all tend to say the same thing. So now, I want to ask, if we go ahead with two thirty timings, let's say we alter the timetable a little bit and we take away those periods, how many parents will agree to that? I would like to know, if parents, how many parents will agree, students going home at two thirty?
See ma'am, uh earlier I wished, I too wished like that, okay, it should be two thirty. But then after listening to all this thing and actually thinking about the facts, to keep the daily routine of my child in my mind, no, I think it's a risk. We are just taking a risk. You know, it's a big risk, I can't be sure because these kids, they say something and they do something else. So it's a risk for us. We are somehow, you know, eliminating that one hour from the school. But how productive will they be in that one hour? Whether they will take proper rest or not? Like for her, I know she thinks that she doesn't get to rest and all and so that she's not able to take study well properly because she's not getting ample time at home. And see, we are here for them. Even if you all will call me at, call us at five or six, we will come and we have to do our certain duties that we cannot escape from, huh? But for them, it is like, we are making things easier for them. For what? Like, what will be the result that we have to think? Like we are making things easier for them.
Yes, we want parents, actually, children will want anything. We want parents.
As a parent, we have to think like what it should be, like how, how much you, how much that one hour will be utilized for what? If they want it for rest, it has to be strictly for rest. But they are not doing that way, no ma'am, they are just following their instincts. Like they want to take rest, they have to be there on phone or what they have to do. They're not sure about. Don't, see, it's like, Baba, it is not that auntie is not talking on behalf of you, but yeah. See, as a parent and we all have been through all these things, like we were also students. So we had also all the, and it's just making the things simply to the, and we were not, we did not have that courage to say to our teachers that the school timing should be this and that. We used to follow whatever was being told to us.
So I, I, I think, I think it's more parents fault than the children.
Yes. Because we have given so.
Because you are peppering them, you are, you know. Okay, tell me again, sitting here, uh we, we, we call, we were asking your opinion about what, what you want, yes? We called the parents, said we are making sure that we take your opinions into consideration. You tell me how many other schools have done this? I don't think any other school would do this. What it is is that we do want you to give your opinion, but we also expect you to take on the responsibility for yourselves, for your actions and your, and your words, yeah? When you say that other Xavier's college, they, they leave by two thirty, whatever, yeah? That's up to them. When Ms. Kirjit made this timetable, six subjects, if we do just one, one topic every day, they can leave after sixth period. We will even cut out their break or whatever. If, you know, if we felt that it would be, uh it would be productive for them. If the parents thought it would be productive for them to get home by, by one o'clock, we would do that. But don't forget also, this is for the parents and the students. When they leave school early, why Ms. Kirjit gave two periods of accountancy? She gave two periods of business studies and two, because you need that much extra time. And that also means that you don't have to go outside for coaching, right? You leave at one o'clock, you'll be going to for coaching, for, for tuitions, uh for the whole afternoon. So where is your times that you saved? Is it leisure time? It's not. These are the things that we have taken into consideration, that is why we have done this. That is why we've tried to give you as much as we can because you are in school and we know that we can do that. Once you get home, yeah, there is going to be certain responsibilities as you get into higher studies, that you do take out responsibility. But you will have that much time freer, I promise you that. Because if you go home, Shimron, at even one o'clock, you go, by the time you get home, we let you go home by one o'clock. You go home, you'll sleep for couple of hours because you have been in school and because you have left early in the morning and whatever. You know, the things don't work for you. Then by the afternoon, uh you know, then you would have to go to, to college, to, to tuitions. At least three hours of tuitions is nothing, am I right, miss? And the parents know that, no? We, we know that, that this is what, how things are done. So then your whole evening is gone anyway. Not only will you have homework or, or projects to do from, from school, you will have that from, if it's a good uh coaching, uh, well, coaching session or tuition teacher or whatever, they will also give you things to practice. You will have twice as much homework. And when will you get the time to do homework? Because you've done coaching, you've done tuitions, by time six o'clock, we've got these little ones who come over and the parents say, oh, they go to tuitions and from four, from four or five till six, six thirty, they don't have any time. Yet, they go for tuitions. Can you imagine what your lives would be like? Just imagine, think about it, okay? Yeah?
Yeah, okay, so what we're prepared to do, all your parents have basically voted, right? That you're gonna stay here till three thirty. And we're gonna take your parents' vote, not your vote, okay? But what we're prepared to do is say, okay, you can all go at three ten. So when the bell goes at three ten, you can go home.
Do you want P E period or not?
Do you want P E period or not?
If you don't want the P E period, then twice a week, raise your hands because we will try to work out something else. Those two days, you can work on even earlier than this. So how many of you want that P E period?
Oh, Shimron, he doesn't want his P E period. Instead of bloody nine and ten, he was pulling your hair out when you couldn't get P E. Huh? Now all of a sudden, you don't want P E? You don't want to go and play football?
Because you know, what was he asking, point was asking for entertainment time. You remember? And what was entertainment time?
I don't think you should get.
And, and you know, give, you know, some respect and maybe that like when they.
Yeah. I think, personally speaking, that we, they should keep their P E periods, right? Because it gets them out, they can mix up with standard ten, you can go and play football and all the rest of it. I'm telling you, I'm disappointed in you.
So three ten, they can leave, yes?
It's, it's good.
Very important for all of you, yes, to, to have that little bit of, it can just twice a week. Uh and you're also mixing in with, with our kids, our Ken Stadler, because we are a small class, we don't, yeah, P is going to be very uninteresting. So Ms. Kirjit has given you P with another Ken Stadler class, yeah? So you, you have some physical exercises, I think, is very important for all of you. The office study, 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 then even if it's twice a week, I think it's very.
It's a bit of release.
Also, according to, according to C B S C, no?
According to C B S C and, and the, the national education policy, we have to give you P. So it, sorry? Work experience, P, general studies, yeah, these three things, which are, can be counted as entertainment periods, Shimron, yes? So I think, and also with the, you know, majority of the students wanting, it will stay, yeah? Okay? Uh.
Master, you can say.
I think they just, they were, yeah, they were bored. I'll tell you what actually happened on Monday, they were bored. Because one after the other, they were all periods, proper subject periods. They did not have even a single period where they can break that monotony. What happens is, if you have got some art period in between or value education, we have not given them any library period like how the rest of the school has. So that day when I discussed with them, I said, I am ready to put one period in a day so that, you know, it, it breaks value education, art, library and to physical education. So each day, they will get one period where they get a break from a regular subject. But rest of the periods are important, you cannot get away from that. And the second thing what we can do is, three ten, if you want to leave, because those who are going by transport will anyway leave with the transport. But rest, those who want to leave, by three ten, they can leave. So that is a special, we are bending a rule only for eleventh standard. So that is maximum. Anything else, any parent? Karen?
Karen, she wants you to say something.
She can go on.
No, no. I would like to hear every, all the, all the kids' opinion about this because we don't want to have all this hours of game. If you disagree with that, from your parents, let's speak up.
I just, I just want to ask all of them if they are still, if they are fine with that three ten thing. If they are fine, then I won't speak, but if they are not, then I'll speak for them.
Kenneth, you are came free time.
Be honest and, yeah, be open, don't worry.
Yeah, miss, I think we should lock in our students. My father's right, I got focus, I think, and yeah, I'll get eighty percent for the eleventh and yeah, three, three ten, three thirty, anytime.
Uh I'm fine with three ten or three thirty-two. I'm fine with three ten.
Be honest, guys, be honest. I don't like the.
Just be, just be honest. I'm, I'm fine with three ten. I'm fine with three ten also, three ten.
I'm fine with it, three ten or three ten.
Oh, and that's Erica and Shimron are the two rest.
Yeah.
That they're not, they're not happy.
I'm fine, anytime, three ten or three ten.
Okay.
Yeah, so like they all are fine with it. No, if they weren't fine with it, I would have stood up for them and said things. I, I had my valid points, but then now it's fine.
Please, please, I would like to, because I think it's very important and I love to pay him some pressure, please. What are the valid points, please, we would love to.
No, basically, uh all the, I knew that this would happen. I actually knew all the parents, if one parent says they're against it, all the parents would go with that. I had a feeling and management was already against it somewhat, not, not fully, but half of it. No, you all totally did not set it up.
Carol, today when we came, Sir Rocky, he spoke to me that, yes, we will change the timings. We came with that mindset, trust me. This is right on the spot when we saw what parents are saying. So that means your convincing power with your parents is not good enough. I told you yesterday very clearly, I said, if you really want time to be cut short, I don't want you people saying, if it comes from your parents' mouth, there is no way, we will, we are ready for that. See, we discussed in the office as well. Now, when parents are saying no, it means parents are not convinced with the idea. And this decision has to be the parents, not students, right?
Yeah. So that's what, but now I don't know if you all are saying the truth, you all are fine with three ten? Please, one more time, if you all are fine with it, just tell me.
You know, instinctive, yeah. Yeah.
They've already said it, two or three times, right? How keep us in the same place?
You agree with that?
I will, let me just tell you one thing, I want to hear your opinion, right? But it is decided.
It's done.
We don't want to change it. So stop asking them over and over again.
Then it's fine.
That was your kid. Yeah, Ms. Banna, okay.
I was just going, I was going to say, if we were there for two thirty, I was about to say that, like, like Ms. Mitha said that it was back then. I don't know when she was, when, which year she used to be in school. Life was different then, life is different now, obviously. No, we agree, we agree with that, yes, yeah. Okay, yeah.
Life was different then, life.
Yeah, we cannot compare, yeah, true.
I, 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 I want to ask you, who made life different?
The generations, the coming generations.
Yeah, you make it different or not different? So you made your lives more difficult?
It's not difficult, I, it's.
I want to ask just quickly, when you say different, do you mean your life is tougher now or that we had it tougher?
No, you, you all had it tougher.
Ah, good, just want to clear that up.
Yeah, no, absolutely, we have, our lives are not tough. But I've seen the stress on these people's face, like, they were literally, like, so stressed up. We, I'm not even kidding, we used to sleep by sixth period, our batteries were down, we used to go to sleep, all of us. You can agree with the teachers over there, yes? So this is what, if that one hour was given to us, I, I myself, I would have been very.
So I think that is a concern, we should be discussing with a doctor, if by sixth period their batteries are down, that is not something nice. I mean, that is concerning to all of us. If a child cannot stay awake till two o'clock, you were doing that in tenth and suddenly something has happened in eleventh, when your battery is down after sixth period, I think all of you need to go to physician, please.
This has to do with your mindset, this is to do with your, your lifestyle. You all think that, yeah, yeah, we, we have sort of grown up now and we are eleventh standard. If you don't go to bed at, on time at night and then wake up fresh, you think if that three hours of sleep or four hours of sleep at night is enough for you because you are on the phone or you're, you're out, you're doing whatever, then in the morning, when you get up, then even about fourth period, you would want to go to sleep. So again, you need to be a look in yourselves, within yourselves. You need to look at your diet because diet is very, very important to know how much energy that gives you, what kind of diet you should be having, how the, how the energy is released. So your, your diet, you need to take into consideration, you need to take up your, your, yeah, the sleep. You need to take your, your time management at home into consideration as well, okay? So you all need to learn about them. I will get a dietitian, actually, I had asked the dietitian to come over and speak to you. Ask the right questions. Don't, you know, don't, don't be like, you're, you're so grown up now, you know, or you, you want to behave like grown ups. There's certain responsibilities that come with being grown up. One is responsibility for yourself. Don't look to your parents, that the parent says, wake up, do this, do that, this is the food. I don't like the pump and the parent will give you something else. It shouldn't be like that. Start thinking about how you are going to improve, how you are going to improve. You should be having these thoughts. You should not be looking towards the teachers, you should not be looking towards the parents. You should be looking, improving yourself, doing research and finding out how you are going to keep yourself awake. What is wrong? Is it to do with my sleep pattern? It is, is it to do with my, uh, with my diet? What is it to do with that I want to go to sleep at my sixth period? Okay? So these things, maybe you can look into a small book, all of them, do something about it.
I'll just say this. From tenth standard to eleventh standard has been three months.
Yes.
Not three years, you haven't changed that much, right? It's been three months and all of a sudden, you're falling asleep in, in the sixth period, your batteries are down? Come on, what's changed? Three months, you've been off two, two of those months. So what's changed, right? That's exactly what happened, you've got lazy during the holidays. You feel like, you had that mindset of, okay, I finished school, right? I finished tenth. I finished tenth standard, I finished school, I'm gonna sleep until two, three o'clock in the afternoon, I'm gonna eat whatever I want, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that. That's exactly why your battery levels are low now. So all you gotta do is get back into that attitude that you had when using standard ten. That's it.
Yes?
It hasn't been a lifetime, it's been three bloody months. Okay?
So what's your conclusion, to speak on behalf of the parents? We hear you, that time is not going to change.
No, now, what Sir Rocky pointed out, it's like a really valid point right there, because we, I agree that I personally got lazy during the holidays, after both like, such a headache, the boats were a headache. But like, yeah, my conclusion will be. Yeah.
We need to take time, everybody else.
Everyone takes time to get back into the swing of things, that's all you need. But you've got to make the effort yourself, and a conscious decision, that you need to get back into your routine. You can't have the same routine that you had when using holiday. Because you're back at school now, so you need to have the same routine that you had when using standard ten.
So my conclusion will be, I'd like to thank the management, they took our opinions into consideration, and the parents who took the trouble to come here and listen to our things. But then, at last, yeah, we will, we are fine with three ten, and thank you so much.
Carol, you're great. That's very, very good.
Carol, uh, want to say to all of you, thank you so much, yes, quite, you're very good. And it's nice to have one person leading everybody, this is very important. And keeping this in mind, all of you get together, you know, and, and think about how, how you're going to help each other as a group. Yeah, changing your routines and, and, you know, looking at your diets and things like that. Yeah, just do some research, research and do that together. Also, um, I want to say, although this was not changed, but this is Green Meadow School, we would always, always would want you to come to us as a group, as individuals, whenever there is any reason for you to get upset in school, or to, to have any, at any, uh, anything, any problems at all, okay? Anything that is bothering you, anything, we are always there. Don't think that we will, we will sort of never do this again, we are always there, and I think this is, this is first time ever that we have called the students in, because you also came to us in a group, as a group. And I think you sent a, sent a very good precedence to, for, for rest of the school, I'm proud of all of you. And please, make sure that you're doing this all the time, we are always there for you, yes? And for the parents, thank you so much.
It's a good mark of a young adult.
Yes, yeah, well done. And parents, thank you so much, each one of you, for taking the time out and coming in to see us, thank you. Because this is how we will support the children. Yeah? Thank you very much. Miss Bhavna, you came in late, do you want to say?
No ma'am, that's fine, I, I actually lost the track of.
Yeah, she was in the class, yeah.
Okay, so, thank you so much, parents.
Thank you.
Your timetable will be up to you?
Ma'am, new time, it's up to three ten only, then the class teachers spend twenty minutes with them, so now they can leave.
And now they can go home about three ten.
Those who.
I will see to that, yes, yes, I'm going to do that, I'm going to alter the timetable a little bit, yes. Yeah, they came to me, we discussed, and I told them, I said, let's do that. So we.
I don't know how much they will participate, but they will not have a chance to say anything. See, I, I really admire the way you all have actually heard and otherwise no school, to entertain such things. So they are so much to do on their own, and you give them chance that they can.
I'll say they are lucky, this is the first batch, they are getting all the privilege, and we are ready.
That's right, yeah.
We want them to perform best, and they are getting an extra advantage, trust me. Because they are the first batch, you are special ones, you are getting all that, you know? We'll do our best to make sure that they get the good results.
Almost like, you know, for the parents, it's almost like having a coaching sessions. With eleven of them, even if you go to tuitions or coaching sessions, you know, there have been bigger batches. Hey, and we're so privileged, that you are getting one-on-one from the teachers, yeah?
We would appreciate if the parents come and say, okay, this teacher, my child is not able to understand. But these issues you have not taken up, you're not bothered about the teachers or the subject content. The concern is, I need to go Monday and sleep. So I think let's start, change our focus and shift more to, what are you studying? Whether it is qualitative, you have an issue, you work on that, we will work on that. So let's together make sure you get, again, good results, in the end, the results that matter, yeah?
Can we call the, the new periods that you're gonna change, Shimron's entertainment period?
Yeah, she, it was really funny, he said, we don't have any entertainment.
I said, what, somebody should come and dance in your class?
Nah, he should invite us, he should dance for us.
I love it, I, we love it, you know, when they all come, uh, they're not the only ones who come, we get from ninth standard, tenth standard, if the kids, you know, sometimes they just walk in and they, they want to discuss their opinion. And, and we, we love it, you know, we, it is not sort of so formal, it will be formal because you are sitting here, otherwise, uh, you know, with the kids, we are like, in the office, standing, cracking jokes, and, you know, and we love that. We love talking to the kids, hearing their opinions, no matter which way. See, it doesn't matter what you have to say, because we always want you there what you, what you're thinking. Because that way, if, when you get in trouble, or if you, you want any assistance at all, we are there. Feel comfortable with that, we're always there, no matter whether it happens in school or it happens outside. If any of you get into any kind of trouble, and you feel you can't go to anyone, you come to us. Okay? We will not say, ah, not a problem. Yes? We will always be there for you. All right? We love you. All right?
Thank you.